Mr. McCoslin, can you please take role?
Ms. Spice.
Here.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Here.
Mrs. Janasik.
Here.
Mrs. Hoppy.
Here.
Mr. McGregor.
Here.
Mr. Modrak.
Here.
Mr. Scalzo.
Here.
Mrs. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
All nine members present.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda for business items?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Scalzo, seconded by Mr. Grisbeck.
Mrs. Hoppy. Motion carries.
Can I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from March 14th, 21st, and 28th?
Second.
Motion's made by Ms. Turner, seconded by Mrs. Janasik.
Mrs. Hoppy. Motion carries.
I'd like to announce executive sessions that we held on April 25th today for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. Coming to the report, student government. Do you have a report? Looks like you do.
So right now, we have two major things going on to wrap up the year. Our elections just took place, so all student government officers, executive board members, and senators for next school year have been elected. The other big thing going on right now is Staff Appreciation Week, which will take place next week. Throughout the week, we will have lunches, breakfast, and gifts to show our appreciation for the teachers at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you. PTO and PTA report.
Yes, hi, this is Vanessa Stipp. I'm filling in for Jackie. I'm the treasurer at the Ben Franklin PTO. At Abraham Lincoln, they held their annual science fair and art expo on Tuesday, April 11th. The students proudly displayed 45 science projects and 65 pieces of art for their friends, family, and Lincoln students and staff to see. Congratulations to all of the students for working so hard to complete such amazing work. They also just wrapped up a fantastic week of the Scholastic Book Fair and are busy planning some fun end-of-year activities. Ben Franklin held their annual Parents' Night Out, which is their fundraiser. It was a huge success. They also held their annual Art and Science Fair with some amazing projects from all grade levels. Washington hosted their We Run along with Ben Franklin last week in preparation for the Kids Pittsburgh Marathon. Washington's Talent Show, where students and staff showcase their amazing talents, will be held this Friday at the IMS auditorium. William Penn Elementary held their annual Science and Art Fair. There were so many great projects displayed throughout the school. They had multiple science-related tables set up, ice cream, and had a great turnout. At Neil Armstrong Middle School in late March, an assembly was provided for students on anti-bullying and motivation by John Crittigan. He was captivating and engaging for the students with a fabulous message. And on Friday, April 21st, the PTO hosted a PJ-themed bingo, a family fun event for all with Auntie Anne's pretzel truck. And lastly, at IMS PTS, the IMS PTSO is busy planning for staff appreciation and end-of-year celebrations for the students. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any committee reports? Oh, yeah, sorry. Please.
No, and I just want to take this brief opportunity just to provide some points of information about an item later in the agenda, and that is F1. And it correlates to the school code. School code is a unique piece of legislation in state law that is, has to be read adopted annually. And so every year, we have the school code, which is a very large piece of legislation at the state level, and it is tweaked every year through the legislative process. So as it stands right now, and that typically happens in May or June, so right now, lots of different bills are being introduced about the House and the Senate to make these modest and sometimes less than modest adjustments to the school code. And then we find out in June what our school code will look like for '23, '24 school year. Right now, there are 68 proposed amendments from the House to the school code, and there's a whole range of different topics it addresses. On the Senate side, there are 10 proposed pieces of legislation. Each of those are going through the Education Committee in their respective legislative bodies. One of the pieces of legislation in both the House and the Senate is House Bill and Senate Bill 180, and this proposes the provision of universal meals for students, K through 12, regardless of income status, with some other caveats in terms of federal funding. So I just want to note that right this evening before the Board is a resolution of support. This would not be local adoption of this particular item, but simply adding your voice, should a majority of the Board wish to do so, to the legislative item. And so if there's any questions about that, let me know, but I understood that there were some in the community who wanted to know if this was, if they were getting free lunches. And I don't, I can't handicap for you right now the likelihood of success, but it would have to be funded at a very high level entirely by the state. There is a good amount of ARPA money and money that's kind of from the federal government that's flowed to the state, resulting in some, a good amount of funds sitting in Harrisburg for a whole number of, a whole host of projects, but there are lots of different parts of government that are vying for those dollars. So that, this is simply one of the proposed pieces of legislation that that addresses. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Now committee reports.
From the library, wishing for everybody to attend, yeah, Party in the Park, which will be in South Park.
Saturday, right?
Yeah, and it benefits the library, the Community Foundation, the Education Foundation, and the Historical Society. So it's a great event on Saturday night from 4:00 to 7:00.
Any other committee reports? So on last Friday, the Shade Tree Commission, which I attend as a Board representative, did tree planting in Miners Park. And actually, it was really neat that the environmental club from the high school attended and did the tree planting. And that was neat, very, very nice activity. So I believe there's another event scheduled for this Friday also to celebrate Earth Day. And, but I'm sorry, I forget which park it's at, but I think it's on the Bethel Park municipal site.
I have one thing.
Pine tree isn't? Okay.
So I have one item to share. Cameron Santoriello, who is a senior at the high school in the Advertising and Design Program at Steel Center, brought home a silver medal from the Skills USA competition in Hershey, PA earlier this month, so can congratulate Cameron on a job well done.
Any other committee reports? Nope. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Christensen. Good evening, everyone. I'll start with a couple of recognitions or announcements. April is Autism Awareness Month, and it's that time where we reflect on our progress and reaffirm our commitment to supporting and responding to the needs of people on the autism spectrum now and in the future. We've learned so much about the needs and aspirations of those on the spectrum and from their parents and community members. As we learn, we all learn and grow alongside of them. We certainly have a lot to learn about our students on the spectrum, but we know for certain that we are a better school system, a better district, better community because they're in it. Second announcement is that March, or probably April is also Military Family Month, and so we join all of our military families in honoring the contributions and sacrifices that they make. Statistically, they move every two to three years, change schools six to nine times from when they start kindergarten until they graduate from high school. And so as a district with some military families, we will work to ensure that our military children have access to the support and resources they need, knowing those extra challenges that they have to overcome. There are a number of retirees on tonight's agenda for the Board to adopt. I could take this opportunity to highlight them to the Board so you know who's ending their career with us. We start with Linda Bovee. Linda began her career as a substitute instructional noontime health room and paraprofessional aide back in 2000. In September of that year, she became a half-time special education paraprofessional at George Washington and became full-time in that building in October of 2021. She transferred to Memorial in 2003, and she'll retire from that position at the end of the school year. In 1994, Kathy Bauer was approved as a substitute noontime aide, and during the next several years, she was a health room and noontime aide. Beginning in '97, she became a health room aide at Neil Armstrong until January of 2017, when she became a special education paraprofessional at the high school where she will end her career. June Dolan launched her career as a substitute instructional noontime health room and paraprofessional aide back in 2000. She also held the position of a 20-hour instructional aide and noontime aide at Memorial. June became a full-time special education para at the high school in 2002, and she retains that position today. She's also worked over several years as a part of our summer extended school year program. In November of 2000, Margaret Giordano began with the district as a noontime aide at Ben Franklin Elementary and transferred to Memorial as a noontime aide in 2002. Margaret worked as an instructional aide in the early 2003, then became a noon, a half-time special education paraprofessional at Neil in the fall of 2003. In 2006, she transferred to the high school as a special ed paraprofessional, and she's also spent time working in our ESY program, and she'll retire from the high school at the end of the year. Mary Jo Hartman started her career at Memorial in 2003. She was a part-time special ed para at Memorial, and then she moved to the high school in 2009, and she's been there ever since. Paula Herka started her career in 2001. She was hired as a subsecretary and a sub-instructional computer and noontime aide for the district, and then she was moved to full-time at Ben Franklin, and she'll retire there from her current position. Elaine Litwin was hired as a classified sub in 2007, and as in March, she became a sub paraprofessional at the high school. In September of that same year, she moved to full-time para at the high school, and she'll retire from that position at the end of this year. Maria Machioni in January of 2018 was approved as a full-time bus driver, and she'll retire at the end of this year, still driving the bus. Lynn Ryan was hired in August of 2003 as a full-time special ed para at Neil. She still has that position, and she's been a solid staple in that building for her whole career. Donna Salas started her career with the district as a health room aide in 2012. In 2014, she was assigned to George Washington as a health room aide, and then in 2016, she became a full-time health service nurse at the high school, and she'll retire from that position at the end of the year. Nancy Sigmond started in 1999. She was a substitute, primarily a librarian aide in the elementary buildings, and then full-time special ed para at Washington, and she's been there ever since, and she's also been a part of our ESY program throughout her career. Still going here, folks. Marie Surianni started with the district as a subsecretary. In May of 2003, she became a half-time special ed para at Washington and then was full-time at Memorial. She transferred to Franklin in 2004, and she'll retire from that position at the end of the year. Janet Sterrett, in October of '88, she began her career at the senior high school building as a computer technology aide. She's worked on several additional days in the summer to aid in the computer maintenance, inventory, and et cetera. She was instrumental in obtaining a mini-grant that took part in summer service programs, and she was added to a substitute in the summer of 2006 as a summer sub. She's devoted her time as president of the Paraprofessionals Aides Bargaining Unit for numerous years. She'll end her career at the high school in her current position of computer paraprofessional. And I'll note that in October of 1988, when she was hired, there were, in fact, personal computers in classrooms at Bethel Park.
She ran the Apple Computer Lab.
There you go. Jennifer Yost was approved as a subsecretary and sub aide in 2001. In 2002, she was approved as an instructional aide and a noontime aide at Washington. She became a part-time special ed para at Neil in 2007, and in 2009, she became full-time, and she's been there ever since and has also participated in the extended school year program. So there are our retirees that you have on tonight's agenda for approval. And the last part of my agenda will be to give the Board an update on the strategic plan. This month, we're going to talk about curriculum and instruction. And for this, I'm focused on curriculum instruction goals. I'm pleased to report that we've made good progress on these goals and the related action steps since I last reported to you six months ago. First in the spotlight is a goal for a complete curriculum review. So it was our aim to get each and every course written into our mapping software, and in doing so, ensuring it's up-to-date and aligned to the PA standards, as well as to the preceding and proceeding courses. This year, we've dedicated some valuable in-service time to do this curriculum mapping work. Of course, more time is needed. Mapping the curriculum and updating and refreshing the courses are proving to be time-consuming. It will take every bit of time in this five-year strategic plan to accomplish this major update. I'm grateful for the efforts of our teachers who are taking this goal-driven opportunity most seriously and are producing great work. Also embedded in this overarching goal is to improve the curriculum development and revision process. I'm pleased to say we had a great year of growth in this area. We now have facilitators in place for all curriculum areas in the K-12 program of study, and these facilitators meet every month with their department members to discuss curriculum and programming. We've also held two Curriculum Council meetings this year to consider department proposals for any and all updates to the curriculum. In a couple of weeks, at the May 9th Curriculum Committee Meeting of the Board, we will present the recommendations that came from the spring council meeting. It is a pleasure to report to the Board that the faculty and administration are now seeing curriculum as a dynamic, ever-evolving process in Bethel Park. The days of five-year adoption cycles have given way to the mantra of continuous improvement. This is a huge shift. Another goal where we have made some progress is moving the district into an MTSS structure for our interventions and enrichment. It's our goal to have the right intervention systems and programs available that do not over-accommodate for students or under-expect from them. We also want every teacher to see themselves as an intervention specialist. It's our goal to have tiers or leveled systems of interventions for students who are showing signs of academic struggle, and based on evidence, each tier becomes more involved, more systematic, more explicit, and more teacher-directed. We talk about just-right leveled books for kids, so too should our interventions be just right. To get a bit more specific, we are currently working to firmly re-establish the roles of our existing intervention programs and specialists. We expect the systems to work well everywhere, and we expect everyone to understand their role in the intervention system. This will seem like a monumental shift in some places, but very familiar in others. It definitely asks more of the classroom teacher. Tied to this goal is our map testing program now in its second year. This is a reading and math benchmarking system where teachers can get useful data about their student skills and track their growth over time. We are starting to see trends in the data that is helping to drive decision-making, like the interventions I just talked about. It's very much worth the investment. The fourth goal relates to improving performance on the major assessments, the PSAs, keystones, and AP exams. We made progress in two areas. First, we're wrapping up year two of the third year, of three years, of the NIMZI National Math Science Initiative partnership, which directs significant professional development to advanced placement teachers and provides support and tutoring to AP students, and the impact has been substantial. Our AP scores are up, and our AP course and test participation are also up. The final year of the grant will be dedicated to supporting the teachers who offer a feeder course to the AP course, so we can infuse the entire pipeline with the best strategies and tools to improve instruction and the outcomes for courses that lead to an AP course. The other area of growth for goal number four has been our evaluation of software to assist skills, pardon me, assist teachers with skills reinforcement, particularly in math and reading. The administration has assessed the usage of these online tools to determine the volume of traffic the sites are getting and thereby determine the necessity and usefulness of the sites. Our strategic plan makes reference to Apex and Study Island as two of those recommended tools. However, we should, we believe we should be more laser-guided with our tool selection instead of casting such a wide expansive net. We have two such systems for your consideration at the Curriculum Council Meeting on May 9th. The fifth goal area is implementing a high-quality experiential STEAM program. Here is another goal where some progress has been made on specific programs. The Invention Land Program, for instance, at the middle schools, went extremely well this year. Our students thrived, and our teachers embraced the whole program masterfully. I can say with confidence, our attention to the STEAM program and experience is growing, particularly in the design of the new elementary building. To be fair in the reporting, I acknowledge there are several action steps under the five goals which have not received any attention. Several reasons explain these action steps for getting no attention. Some of them, like all-day kindergarten, are better suited when the district consolidates the buildings and we have more resources available. And for some others, a sense of priority on the bigger goals is the reason behind the lack of progress on some action steps, such as special ed caseload parity. I believe we need to get UDL and MTSS right for all staff before we address specifics for individual staff. And finally, STEAM goals are taking a backseat to the curriculum revision work and the professional development time dedicated to instructional improvement. I can assure you, the administrators have paid careful attention to the design of the STEAM spaces in the new elementary school, and there's a vision for how STEAM will be expanded, but for now, our focus is on whole-scale curriculum and instructional progress. So as I said before, this strategic plan is very ambitious. There are six buckets of goals. There are 17 broad and ambitious goals and 96 action steps to achieve those goals. We're pleased with this progress, and we're seeing changes in Bethel Park. It's worth saying repeatedly that with these goals, we're talking about seismic shifts in our foundations. We're updating, we're updating or outright changing the cornerstones and keystones of our curriculum. Each one is vital. Each one will make a significant difference in the current and future experience in Bethel Park. These shifts take time to accomplish, and it takes even more time for it to prove to achieve the long-term academic growth we seek in being best in class. To paraphrase a classic saying, "We'll keep our feet firmly planted in the ground, but keep reaching for the stars." I close by extending my appreciation for your support as a Board, your commitment, and your patience, and I extend the same to our faculty and administrators for doing this heavy lifting. And now I'll turn it over to Mr. Cromie for his five big things.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight is time for our five big things, something, one of everyone's favorite moment of every school board meeting. So as you know, there are always more than five great things happening at Bethel Park, so if you haven't been included, please no angry letters, no threatening videos. We'll get to you. And because we have to limit it to five, I'm not going to mention that Mason Miller, a former Bethel Park pitcher, made his major league debut last week, hit over 100 on the gun 15 times during that game, and he'll make his second start tonight at 9:38 Eastern on MLB Network. I will not talk about that. What we will talk about is, speaking of fabulous athletes, we have a young lady, a junior. Her name is Artemis Conneboy. Two weekends ago, the Bethel Park junior was the top 3A finisher in the 400 meters at the TSTCA Championships at West Mifflin. Her time of 57.71 seconds broke her own school records just two weeks prior at the Mount Lebanon Invitational. The previous mark had stood for 49 years. Artemis also broke a 30-year-old school record in the 100 meters with a time of 12.48 seconds, and the previous record of 12.54 seconds was set by Melanie Denson in 1993. Artemis believes she can crack the 200 meters before the season's over as well, which would be incredible. This is truly one of the great athletes in the history of Bethel Park. We also, as an aside, I'm not going to talk about it, but Jenna Lang is also an outstanding distance runner, one of the great distance runners in the history of Bethel Park. Okay. Let's see here. Am I fighting you, Mr. Bishopner? Here we are. Okay, Mr. Dave Espinar, who is a fabulous teacher, he and his students at the Neil Armstrong Middle School Hydroponics Club have grown a number of vegetables, including lettuce, kale, cucumbers, green beans, and tomatoes in their hydroponic towers. Tomorrow, they will share their bounty from the past 30 days with our friends at SHIM, which has a nice program for helping to feed area families in need. According to Espinar, the students come down to his classroom during opportune times in our schedule, including things like homeroom, elective classes, and of course, during recess to help tend to their towers. I had a chance to see it last week. It's incredible. What they're doing is really remarkable, and it's something we should be very proud Our third big thing is, last week, Mr. Christensen talked about this a little bit. In honor of Earth Day, Bethel Park's Environmental Club partnered with the Shade Tree Commission to plant eight new trees at Miners Park. In the fall, the Shade Tree Commission planted 18 trees, also with the help of Bethel Park students in the park. The Environmental Club, which is just in its first year, previously partnered with Tree Pittsburgh to plant trees near the high school's church road entrance, and they also organized a cleanup event behind the hillside of the Bethel Park in Walmart, and it's incredible what they've done. In just their first year, the membership of that group is incredible, and the impact they're having is something, again, that makes me very proud to be associated with Bethel Park. Our fourth one was, recently had the opportunity to participate in the Invention Land Design Challenge. Neil Armstrong Middle School's sixth graders recently presented a series of innovated inventions to a panel of judges, including, for one of the sessions, me, in a Shark Tank-style competition. I was ruthless as part of the Invention Land Education's Regional Invention Contest. The inventions were as diverse and creative as the students who created them, and they included, among other things, board games, backpack caddies, gym shoe covers, and banana peelers. You don't know you needed a banana peeler, but you do now. The inventions deemed the best according to a scored rubric, which considered the students' presentation abilities, including a commercial they all produced, advanced to the regional competition on May 17th. And last, but certainly not least, last week, we had an opportunity to, students at Franklin Elementary School had an opportunity to visit JA BizTown, Junior Achievements BizTown, which is a model town helped to, designed to help teach students financial literacy. The kids worked in various jobs and exchanged commerce, just like a real economy, and the high school's junior achievement members were also part of the event. Fortunately for us, PA Auditor General Timothy DeFour was also on hand to visit the property and meet with the students, and he also swore in the mayor of BizTown for the day, fourth grader Violet Henderson. So that's all I have for you. Thanks again. Have a good month.
Thank you, Mr. Grammy, for your five-and-a-half big ideas. Okay, I'll ask the curriculum administrators to give us an update on the bright spots.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I wanted to focus on something that we've been working on in collaboration with the Student Support Services. In all of the academic standards that we focus on, it's also very important that we educate the whole child. And this is really where the best of curriculum instruction and student and support services come together and collaborate. And we have been offering an after-school program this year. It began in March and will go through May, and there are six sessions that are twice a month, and they are for students in grades one through eight that were referred through a variety of ways, whether it be through the principal, a teacher, through the SAT team... a variety of ways, whether it be through the principal, a teacher, through the SAT team. We really tried to identify students who were in need of some social emotional learning. And we've got one cohort at each school, so each of the five elementary schools have a cohort. We also have a group at NAMS and IMS, and we were able to do this through the ESTA funding, which is pandemic funds. Essentially, the program is built around the CASL framework. CASL is the collaborative for academic, social, and emotional learning, and they identify those five competencies as the tools you need from whether you're at work or school, at home with your family, self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, social awareness. So each of the first five sessions were dedicated to one competency per session. Variety of activities that the students were able to participate in, beginning each session with some sort of meditation or mindfulness, sketching, journaling, role-playing, team-building, goal-setting. We really tried to make it interactive and what the students want to be there. And we, we tried to make it as easy as we could for the teachers that had, that were participating in supporting these sessions. So we gave them all turnkey resources. They did not have to prepare anything. We built, worked together to build a Google site and provided resources for each session. I would be remiss to not give a shout out to Stacy Klosick and Carla Kalkbrenner. Those are our administrative professionals who are the wind beneath our wings and do so much to support our work and the work of the teachers. So we really want to thank them as well for making this program a success.
Thank you. This evening, I'd like to take some time to focus on the English Language Arts here at the district. As Dr. Walsh said, we're spending a lot of time really looking at our curriculum, and this is a lot of work on the teachers and on the department facilitators. So I just wanted to kind of bring that to light, some of the things that they're doing behind the scenes, and give you a little bit of a preview of what you will see at the May 9th meeting. And so one of the items that we are working on under the direction of Sarah Liberto, our elementary facilitator, is ensuring that all K-2 students will have access to the Hagerty Phonemic Awareness ten-minute lessons each day in their ELA course. And so this is something that was brought to us by the Dyslexia Pilot and something that our teachers have, so we are just working on shoring this up under her leadership. So we appreciate her help with that. Our elementary is also going through a curriculum revision in the ELA department, and so over the course of the next two years, we're going to be spending a lot of that department time that Dr. Walsh talked about, really looking at the resources that are on the market and what best meets the needs of the Bethel Park students and families. And some of the things that we're looking at are wit and wisdom, into reading, wonders, which is our current resource, and we're going to be working with the principal, Jay Johnson, and the departments of ELA and the Social Studies Department to look at what are the pros and cons and what each one of these items can bring to our students and to our community. And so that's exciting. We have a group of teachers who are looking at the MAP fluency program. As Dr. Walsh stated, we currently use MAP Growth for our students in kindergarten through eighth grade to measure their growth and academic progress. And MAP fluency is a tool that students in the primary grades read into the system, and it helps teachers identify some gaps in fluency or sounds. And then there are progress monitoring tools that the kids can walk a path, a targeted path, based on what that assessment shows, and those progress monitorings can be done on a weekly basis, a bi-weekly basis, and so it's targeted to each student. So thank you to the teachers and the administrators who are currently piloting that system. Middle school, we are looking at making a change in, to some of our resources. So we piloted this past year, so thank you to the teachers for doing that. The Into Literature series and a new novel. And high school, while Dr. Charles Youngs is retiring, he is making sure that our teachers at the high school have the training that they need set up to continue to offer our AP courses for our students. And so we are working on getting some professional development for those teachers to be sure that we continue on that rigorous path. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cromie. Mrs. Figlioli and Mrs. Wells, I appreciate those contributions. That's all we had for our update. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, public comments on Agenda I. Is there any comments?
Is the head chair still on the agenda?
You can hear a welcome comment after the meeting. We can watch this later. Moving into the business items, does he have to take any consent?
Yes, Mr. Christensen. So tonight on the consent agenda, we have twenty-one items, and I would like to move to approve all twenty-one items.
Under curriculum, we have two items. Number one, the Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to approve the Bethel Park School District Special Education Plan for 2023 through 2026. And number two, the Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to provide the following elective courses which carry credit towards graduation with less than fourteen students as of the spring course selection count, which are deemed essential to instructional activities. I would like to move items one and two.
Second.
Move by Mr. Scalzo, second and Mr. Toffey.
Motion carries.
Mr. Greg, can you take six items under Personnel Committee?
Yeah.
Just one note.
Sure.
I don't know if anybody else says others should hold out, but I think number six held out.
Okay. Under Personnel, there are six items. Number one, acceptance of resignations. Number two, approval of unpaid leaves of absence. Number three, appointment of assistant superintendent for facilities and operations. Number four, appointment of personnel. Number five, approval of extra duty responsibility program for next school year, twenty-three, twenty-four. And there's number six, approval of summer program staffing. So right now, I would like to move one through five. Okay, and for number six, approval of summer program staffing?
If we could vote separately on that one, yes.
All right, so Mr. McCoslin.
I second it. Yes, one through five.
Voting is open on items one through five. Motion carries.
Okay, now number six.
Now, number six, approval of summer program staffing.
Did you want abstain?
Oh, sorry. Thanks for reminding me.
I can change it.
Yeah.
I think.
Sorry.
Okay. Motion carries. Eight, zero with one abstention.
Thank you.
Because I forgot to hop in there with a question before we voted, which doesn't change the vote, but Dr. Walsh, could you or someone explain what this summer school program is? Because we have various things that happen over the summer.
Sarah, would you?
So that, so that people understand.
So this program we're approving tonight, this is a program for students in K through eight, and this program will focus on ELA and mathematics as based on the winter January MAP scores. That's our starting point because that is the data point that we have now. And we will offer in-person instruction, small group, and we're going to base that around what we're calling a camp, so weekly themes that will be determined with a group of teachers so that it is sort of interdisciplinary, and this year, we are going to add a STEAM component. And so invitations will be going out to families via Google Form in the next week or so. And then I can turn it over to Sarah to explain the other summer programming if you would like to know the difference.
The other summer programming is not on the board agenda. We're still firming up the hiring, but the other programming is Extended School Year, which is only offered to students that qualify through special education services, and that takes place in the month of July. Those revisions should have been made if your student did qualify. They should have been already revised back in February. If there's a question for many students that participate in Extended School Year that may or may not know if they qualified, please feel free to reach out to me.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. I just wanted everyone to know because sometimes people think they can sign up for these if they would like them, so I wanted to clarify. Thank you so much.
On our agenda tonight, we just approved the hiring and the reassignment of a couple administrators I'd like to introduce. First off, Mr. Mark Grzinski, he's in the back. So he, Mark, has been moved up to assistant superintendent in charge of all things operations, things like busing, the construction projects, facilities, things like that that we're doing. And second on the list is Tyler Dillinger. I think that must be Tyler right there. So Tyler is the new assistant principal for IMS. That position is being vacated by George Polaris, who's retiring this year.
Enjoy the backseat there, Dr. Grzinski. It's, that's the last time you get to sit back there.
Over there next time. Mr. Grzinski, can you take three items under Finance?
I can, thank you. Three items under the Finance Committee agenda. Item number one, approval of enrollment in owner-controlled insurance program. The Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to approve the enrollment in the owner-controlled insurance program with CM Regent in the amount of four-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars for Phase Two of the IMS renovation project. Item number two, approval of student services contract. The Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to ratify the Student Services Contract, Crossroads Speech and Hearing, Inc. And then item number three is just information only, our update on the Fund Thirty-One and Fund Thirty-two financial report. I move to approve items number one and two.
Second.
It's moved by Mr. Grzinski, seconded by Mrs. Janicek.
Mr. McCoslin, could you please explain item number one?
Sure. The owner-controlled insurance program is related to your construction project at IMS. It allows us as a district to purchase coverage for the entire project. If there are any issues with the contractors, we can cover that, that coverage and then go back to the, to the companies to get restitution if we need to. But it allows contractors to basically pull out that cost from their services because we're purchasing it for them instead. This, this bid actually came in significantly lower than what we were anticipating. It was about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars lower than what we had originally budgeted because they're aware that we're also doing an upper, our new elementary project, so they wanted to, to give us a good price on it. So you got a pretty good deal on this coverage.
Are you able to give just an example of something that may qualify or something that you see in the past?
Pretty much anything. If it's an admission of something or you run into something that a contractor doesn't fulfill their obligations for completing a particular part of the project and you have a claim against it, this insurance coverage will help you fund that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Motion carries.
Mr. Grzinski, can you take F also?
Sure. Under Other, we have one item, resolution to provide a universal school meal program. I move to approve this item.
Second.
I guess to further some of the discussion from last week, I had a couple outstanding questions. First, Mr. Christensen asked kind of about the timeliness of this item. It does look like HB 180 has a good chance of being voted on this month or, I guess, probably early May to mid-May. So there is a reason to vote on this now. Also, I think it was Ms. Turner asked about kind of the funding mechanism of this item. It would be voted on, in addition to the bill itself, it would be voted on in kind of the normal budgetary process, so it would still have to be approved there.
So it would have to be approved every year, so there is no guarantee?
Correct.
In 2024, 25, that we would have the free breakfast or lunch option?
Correct. I, I think it would be very difficult for the legislature to not approve it again once they fully approved it in this manner. However, it's definitely possible.
I agree. I just want the public to understand that we're at the mercy of the legislature.
Yes, we are indeed. Like in many other things, we are at the mercy of the state legislature. Does anyone have any other questions?
This item was listed as a discussion item, so if you need to vote on it, you're going to have to either do a roll call or do an all in favor.
We can do, do a, just a voice?
Voice all in favor.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Yes, I oppose.
Okay, eight one.
Can I comment on why?
Yes, of course.
Okay. Just for transparency's sake, I would much rather see a resolution to increase the thresholds of who can qualify as opposed to just free breakfast and lunch for everyone, only because I see firsthand every day a school that receives free breakfasts and free lunches, and I see the waste because a lot of that food gets thrown away. I also see the food quality that isn't there, like we would see the, the way things are right now. So I am definitely more in favor for those families who really need that help, getting that help by increasing the threshold to account for inflation and other, other factors that would affect those income levels. So that's why I voted no.
That's a good point. I mean, hopefully, as this bill develops, they'll also factor in the risk of waste because, yeah, that's obviously a risk. Okay, that's the end of our business items. Any public comments on anything else related to school matters? Two minutes at the microphone. Anyone, anyone? Favorite color, gray?
Do I actually move this or am I good?
I think, maybe just move it up just a little bit closer. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we should just turn off the microphone. Okay.
Can I start?
Yes, please, yes.
Hello and thank you. I am Abby Farrell, sophomore Bethel Park High School residing at 6,000 Puddingstone Lane. Coach McNulty is a Hawk, born and raised. She was educated in Bethel, competed in one for as a Hawk, and has become back to the next generation of Hawks. Coach Troy was here for us when the prior coach left, supporting us and guiding us all the way to Nationals where we finished eleventh in the nation. We, including Coach Troy, were recognized by Mayor Jack Allen for our achievement. This was all made possible by Coach Troy as she saved this program, running the JV, varsity, and competitive squads when the prior coach had roughly quit. She believed in us, where the other coach said we would fail. In my view, Coach Troy should be commended for this. We should be proud that a recent graduate of this institution came back and led us to greatness. We should award her, not take away her chance. The Bethel Park Student Code of Conduct states, "Every Bethel Park student is expected to demonstrate positive self-esteem, responsible behavior, commitment to the family and community, attainable expectations, and perseverance to achieve these expectations through honest endeavors to reach his or her maximum potential. Isn't that what Coach Troy has done? Should she be rewarded for the coaching mission and for doing what our code states? Coach Troy came back, provided us all with the positive self-esteem that we needed when we were at our lowest. She took responsibility for resident- She took responsibility for resurrecting the program when it was in total disarray. She made commitment to our community and her Hawk family by going above and beyond to help us. She guided us to our greatest expectations through hard work and perseverance. She's what she wants to become, so why not give her a chance? I'm sure the new candidate for the cheer coach is a great person and coach, but she is not a Hawk. She does not bleed black and orange. She has never walked the halls of these schools and helped lead Bethel to greatness. Coach Troy has and is. We need to reward our fellow Hawk, commend her, and thank her for, thank her and give her this opportunity. We need to have the integrity to do what is right and take care of her only she has took care of us in our time of need. Please give Coach Troy this chance, not only for her sake, not only for our sake, but for all the girls in the community, so that we can have a shining example of what a Hawk should be. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Very good. Takes a lot of courage to get in front of this bunch.
Can I start?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Chayla Miller. I live on 29 Oregon Trail. I am a 10th grade cheerleader, and I was captain for the junior varsity and for the competitive squad this year under Coach Tori Magnati. We had a big change in the coaching this year, and Coach Troy stepped us, stepped up for us. It is only right that we step up for her tonight. Being captain, I had a lot of interaction with Coach Troy. Her coaching style fit great with our team and was proven by our 11th placing at Nationals. An incredible finish for our disrupted year. Not only is Coach Troy a Bethel alumni, but also part of this past, of the past Nationals team. She has a positive coaching style and is always willing to go the extra mile if one of us needs something in our cheer life or in our personal life. I love that she has a Bethel Park connection and has some, has brought back to the program some Bethel Park history. Coach Troy and I talked in detail this year about building the program for the future. She has given us stability that I would like to see stay and pass on to the next generation cheerleaders, which includes my younger sister. Please consider Coach Tori Magnati for the head coaching position and for the competitive cheer coaching position. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on.
Not a cheerma, not a cheerleader, just a cheer mom. Amy Farrell, 6,000 Putting Stone Lane. Concerning the head cheer coaching position that was removed from the agenda, I am hopeful this means you are reconsidering your choice, and also the way the head coach selection process was handled. I hope that you start to consider athlete and parent feedback in all coaching decisions. Something as simple as an end-of-year survey may serve the community very well. Furthermore, I am hopeful that students and parents that have reached out to you have had an impact on you. I hope you see how important continuity is to children and what having the right coach can do for a group of athletes, and how having a strong role model in your life can empower you as a child to stand up for yourself. I hope this is the last time your cheerleaders have to scream and shout to get your attention. These are some of the most amazing athletes in your district, and you are doing them a disservice by not giving them the attention they deserve. It is time that the district stops reacting and stops, and starts acting in the best interests of its students. Thank you.
Any other comments?
My name's Erica Crowe. I live at 5945 Glen Hill Drive. I know that you've heard a lot about Tori Magnati. Through emails, what the girls have said, and lots of parents. With every great coach there's, there has ever been, they've all started with limited experience. Does Tori have a decade of coach experience? She does not, but what she has seems to have been discounted. She is a true leader, a coach, a mentor for these young women. My daughter is a JV cheerleader. She's in ninth grade, so next year, she will continue to be a JV cheerleader. She will all, she is also not a comp cheerleader, so if she were to be considered for the head coach position, she would no longer be my daughter's coach. So, especially, I do want her to be my coach, but, so I stand here before you today, not as a parent that wants what's best for my kid next year, but as a parent who wants to support our program, this outstanding coach and what she has to offer. Last season, my daughter lost her father during the cheer season. Obviously, the loss of a parent is a hard situation for anyone, especially as a cheerleader. But what, it didn't matter that Tori had a decade of experience, two years of experience, or whatever. What mattered is her actions and how she supported my daughter in whatever she needed and however she needed. As parents, teachers, administrators, adults in general, we don't always know what to say or do in these situations. What's important is how Tori navigated, that she went above and beyond to be there for my daughter, to be there for her teammates, who were also impacted either by knowing our family or just by hitting so close to home. Even if Tori was not, no longer my daughter's coach next year, I know that she will continue to be there for my daughter. Student athletes learn so much more from their coaches, other than just their sport, and what the girls learned is ways they can help a friend, a family member, or even a peer deal with a difficult situation. On paper, there might be other, better candidates, but Tori has proven herself, and she should be given the opportunity to gain her experience while having the support of parents, the cheer booster organization, and Bethel Park community to help her further her success. Thank you.
Any other comments? Any other topics? Were there any call-ins? No? Okay. Any board comments? No?
We're heading into our Keystone season and PSSA season, so all the students, eat a good breakfast, get a good night's of sleep, do your best. And I think there are some things going on in your schools, little pep rallies and snacks and some fun stuff. So do your best, enjoy the nice spring weather, and we will see you next time.
I just want to, I think, reiterate what Mr. Christensen said. Welcome, Mr. Dillinger, and good luck, Dr. K.
Okay. Any other comments? Board comments? Motion to adjourn? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Meeting adjourned.